Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of March 14th, 2024. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posts on township's website and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection according with the public meeting notice. First up, we have a new member tonight, so we are going to do an oath of office for seat number six. And Mr. Bernstein?
You got your... It should be in front of you. I state your name.
I, James Vander Vliet.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of Class 4 Member of the Planning Board, Seat 6.
Class 4 Member of the Planning Board, Seat 6.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Welcome. Okay, with them, I have a roll call of Planning Board members and also Board and Township Professionals, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Van... Mr. I'm sorry. Can you say your last name one more time?
Okay.
Vander Vliet. Mr. Vander Vliet.
Yeah.
Mr. Radowitz.
Here.
Mr. Scobbo.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Vitale.
Here.
Mr. Depp.
Here.
Committee Member Lapone.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Here.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Here.
Chair Sirocchi.
Here.
Mr. Coys.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We do not have any meeting minutes nor resolutions for consideration, and we do not have Planning Board business and no considerations of ordinances, so that means we can go right to business from the floor for matters that are not in this evening's agenda. If anyone would like to come up, please state your name and address for the record. And as in the past, please let me comment to five minutes and no discussion of indirectly or directly with regards to warehouse applications.
Good evening. Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. During the January 25th Planning Board meeting, I had asked if Planning Board Attorney Eric Bernstein is appointed or Attorney Eric Bernstein's appointment, is it an automatic renewal or whether he has to submit a bid? Attorney Bernstein stated his appointment is not automatic, so I had asked if Attorney Bernstein had a contract, and he stated he was going to sign it tomorrow. So the January 25th meeting Attorney Bernstein attended without a signed contract, and the two prior Township Planning Board meetings were also attended by Attorney Bernstein without a contract. So I had submitted an Oprah request for that contract, and what I received was a signed contract, but it had no date. Yesterday, I had... This past Tuesday, I attended the Hillsborough Township Committee meeting, and I stated, what I stated now, that Attorney Bernstein did not have a signed contract for the first three meetings. And so is this the standard procedure for Hillsborough, that appointed professionals do not have to sign and date contracts prior to their commencing work for the township?
I'm not aware of any policy along those lines.
So what is the policy of the Planning Board in regard to the contract of Attorney Eric Bernstein?
That's between the township and Mr. Bernstein. We make a... We take a vote whether or not to... As to which professionals to appoint or to award the contracts to.
Okay, but the contract was signed by Attorney Bernstein and by you. There is no date on that contract. Does that require a date?
I'm sure there's a date. I don't have it in front of me, so, David, I'm sure it states terms.
Usually dated after you sign it. And as for the record, the contract is not drafted by my office, it's drafted by the township, so therefore I don't get to see it nor sign it until I receive it from the municipality. It is not required that I have a signed contract on the day I am appointed. I am not required to have a signed contract for any of my clients on the day I am appointed, but to have one at some point. Once the appointment is done, I received it, I believe, the night of the 25th from Mr. Coys's office. It was signed shortly thereafter. It's usually dated after Mr. Sirocchi has dated it, because he's the last one to sign it. As for whether or not it was signed, I don't know, but I am the appointed Planning Board Attorney with or without a signed contract that may or may not be dated.
So what I'm hearing is that an appointed township professional does not need to have a signed and dated contract prior to their commencing work, because that was the case One of the properties that is a subject of application, an application before this board, property owned by John and Linda Shockley, was the subject of a lis pendens. That document was listed as one of the documents for that application, so I obtained a copy from county.
All right, we can't talk about that. That's an ongoing active application.
Excuse me?
That's an ongoing active application.
Okay.
So if you have something that's specific to it, you should bring it up at the next meeting.
This is the Planning Board and what?
No, you can't...
Can be...
No.
What can be discussed if not applications?
Not active applications. You can come the night when that application is being heard if you've got some concerns.
Except that when we come on the night when the application is being heard, we are not permitted, members of the public, to bring up anything other than what is being presented from the attorney with his witnesses.
There is a...
And the only thing that we have been told, members of the public, is that after everything is done, the last day, we can bring up certain things which really need to be addressed prior to the ending of the application. There's an issue with the contract purchaser of that property. At the last Homestead meeting, Attorney Bernstein and the attorney for the applicant, Craig Giannetti, had a...
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. You're still talking. We're not discussing it.
They had a cryptic conversation about something.
You're out of line right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Janusik, if you have a document that you want the Board to consider or to have distributed on a legal issue to the applicant and the objector, submitted to Ms. DeBora, Ms. Paget, and it will get distributed to the party for the purposes of being distributed, but we're not going to discuss a lis pendens or any other legal document in an application where the applicant nor the objectors are not here this evening.
Okay, so this document should be given to the Planning Board?
Give it to... No. Give it to the... Give it to Ms. Paget. She will give it to me, and I will deal with it accordingly to the objector and to the applicants, and that's who will get it.
Okay, very good.
Not the Board.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to this evening's public hearings. First up is going to be Specialty Assays, Inc., File Number 23-PB-16-MSPV, with a time of decision of... It's actually... It should be June 30th. There's 31 days in the month of June.
Oh, it's leap year. We've got an extra year, extra day in there.
It's like June 31st.
Still says 31st?
Yes.
It's all good. Don't worry.
Mr. Chairman, as you may... The Board may be aware, applicant for this matter has asked for a postponement of this matter. Mr. Coys, I believe, has worked with the applicant for a new date, and we do have the extension of time, and since June 31st will never come, there may never be a... Before somebody gets up and says, "We have the time of decision." It's June 30th.
And the date is June 6th for the next hearing. And they're requesting without further notice.
Okay.
So it would be a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue application for Specialty Assays, Inc., File 23-PB-16-SPV, to Thursday, June 6, 2024, 7:00 p.m., or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without further notice to the parties and the time of extension through June 30, 2024.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Scobbo made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion from the dais? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Vander Vliet.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Yes.
Chair Sirocchi.
Yes. So next, I know this is not going to be popular with the two that are sitting in the front right now, but I'm jumping to the CPE Spronswick, Inc., just because it's very quick, and I know we don't have very comfortable seating here, so...
The former chairman gets to take a home after that.
What?
Nice.
Okay, so we have CPE Spronswick, Inc., Seizner, File Number 20-PB-05-MSPV, and there's going to be an extension request. I'm just trying to read this. So the applicant seeking three one-year extensions to allow additional time for outside agency approvals. And with that, I will turn it over to Counselor.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Cetition. I'm from the firm Neemad Davidson-Goldstein. Alongside me to my left is Cheryl Lynn Walters, also from Neemad Davidson-Goldstein. Our firm represents CPE Spronswick.
Can you bring the mic a little bit closer? They're not very long range.
I see. Is this better? Okay. We represent CPE Spronswick regarding this application for an extension of the preliminary and final major site plan approvals previously granted regarding the properties designated as Block 178, Lots 2 and 301. We're asking pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-52, three one-year extensions of the prior approval to account for the delay in being able to obtain NJDOT approval. By way of background, on March 4, 2021, we received preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a combined retail office project on Lot 2, to be known as Town Square. The project as approved includes two two-story mixed-use buildings, a clock tower, 45 parking spaces, excess driveways, and other site improvements. This was memorialized in a Planning Board resolution adopted on May 17, 2021. Since then, the applicant has secured all outside agency approvals and has completed its post-approval compliance with the Board. However, we have endured a long and arduous process with New Jersey Department of Transportation, which I'm going to refer to here and after as NJDOT, specifically regarding access to the site to Route 206. In September of 2021, DOT's Bureau of Major Access Permits, I'm going to refer to them as BMAP, denied access to the applicant to Route 206. We then filed an appeal of this decision, which we have as exhibits, which we will provide to you shortly. On June 9, 2022, an appeal hearing was conducted before DOT hearing officer. On August 16, 2022, the hearing officer issued a written decision overturning the denial of access and remanding back to BMAP for completion of the plan review. Thereafter, we submitted revised site plans to DOT to address the technical comments, which led to further back-and-forth communications with DOT. However, on December 6, 2023, BMAP again denied access to Route 206, citing the exact same reasons which were overturned on appeal. Because of this, we have to go back and seek further and additional relief from BMAP's second attempt to deny access. To that end, we have submitted an appeal request to the DOT on January 5, 2024. DOT asked for some new traffic counts, which were provided on March 1, 2024. Currently, we are awaiting a meeting with the DOT, which will hopefully bring a resolution to the issues and ultimately result in an issuance of the major access permit needed to enable the applicant to post bonds with the township and commence construction. We note that the March 1, 2024 submission, we believe applicant has also completely addressed all technical comments from the DOT. It is the applicant's intention to move forward with the project immediately upon receipt of the major access permit from DOT, but since applicant has been unduly delayed as a result of issues beyond our control, we have no choice but to seek an extension of the 2021 site plan approvals granted by the Board. So under NJSA 40:55-2A, the Board has discretion to grant up to three one-year extensions, whereas here, the developer has followed the standard procedures prescribed for final approval. Here, we think the extensions are warranted because the delays associated with attempting to gain approval from DOT for reasons beyond our control. We have been clearly, as we stated, unable to get the major access permit. Since the original period of... Did you want to go through the...
No, you finish, then I'll address it.
Okay. Since the original period of protection expired on May 17, 2023, the applicant requests that the Board grant all three years of extension at once. This would take the period of protection to May 17, 2026, which would hopefully allow the applicant more than enough time to complete the process with DOT, post-bonds, pull construction permits, and commence development of the properties consistent with the approvals. Please note that the applicant does not propose any amendments to the approved site plans as part of this application. We are only seeking an extension.
Great comments, Dave.
Thank you, Rachel. So this is Cheryl Lynn Walters. It's nice to see everybody. The last time we were here, a few years ago, it was all via Zoom, so it's nice to see people in person. We did have exhibits to go along with that. I had some technical difficulties. I made sure they were on the laptop, but I didn't make sure the laptop had an HDMI port. So Mr. Coys has brought them up because I did submit them to Ms. Paget, and they're on Civic Clerk, and I have hard copies. I'll hand out to your professionals. Briefly, I'll just run through them real quick. The first is a letter from DOT from September 27, 2021. It was theirs... At the end of that letter, you'll see that it indicates it's their second time telling us that they're denying access. They had a prior letter. We'd done a submission. This was the final letter from them denying access the first time. The second document is an August 16, 2022, hearing officer decision from DOT overturning the denial of access. The third exhibit is the December 6, 2023...
You might want to let them go up first, Cheryl.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that document's pretty lengthy, but it... We had a two-day hearing with DOT on that, where we were cross-examining witnesses and entering evidence and written summations subsequently. So that was the second exhibit, which will mark... As soon as I'm done talking about them, I'll mark them any way you want me to mark them, Mr. Bernstein. The third document Mr. Coys has on the screen now is a December 6, 2023, letter from DOT. At the end of that, BMAP again denies access, as Ms. Cetition had indicated, and then they go through all the same reasons that we previously tried through the hearing officer at DOT. So on January 5, 2024, which is the next document that Mr. Coys is going to bring up, we submitted yet another appeal request. I can tell you, I've been contacted by a DAG at DOT who is asked... Who asked for those new traffic counts. We've submitted those. The indication that I'm getting is that there's a new director at BMAP, and things should go a little bit more smoothly. They're reviewing the most recent submission. We're supposed to have a virtual meeting and hopefully have this completely resolved. So for that reason, for that reason alone, we're seeking the extension. And I'm going to... Mr. Bernstein, do you continue from the prior hearing exhibit numbers? All right, so then you want me to mark these A1 through A4?
Yes, please. And will you indicate which ones are which for the purposes of the record?
Yes, sir. So A1 will be the September 27, 2021, letter issued by DOT. A2 will be the August 16, 2022, hearing officer decision. A3 will be DOT's December 6, 2023, letter, again denying access, and A4 is this firm's January 5, 2024, letter with enclosures to DOT, seeking another round of appeal discussions. So I will give those originals, along with the original affidavit and the balance of the green cards, to Mr. Coys, and I have copies for your professionals if they want them.
Thank you, David.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. And listen, nobody here that's been in this town knows how hard it is to deal with our friends at NJDOT more than me and some of the other members on this Board. Has there been any support or documentation from the county and the county planning board since they're making you go out to Amwell Road, which is a county road? Have you asked for them to write you a letter of support?
For... To DOT? Yes. We also had the assistance of Mr. Coys during the DOT appeal hearing the first time around. He provided some testimony regarding the township's master plan and the town center vision for that downtown area of 206, once the bypass was open. Keep in mind, when we had the hearing with DOT, it was prior to the bypass opening. So now that the bypass is open and your traffic counts have come way down in that area, we're hoping that DOT is going to consider eliminating that merge in front of the property, maybe making the right turn coming down Amwell, making that right lane a right turn only, have one lane come through straight, and eliminate the lane drop on this side of 206, I mean of Amwell Road, to make that a safer condition. It was one of the primary concerns of the reviewer inside BMAP. But... And we did go to the county, and the county... I don't think the county wrote us a letter of support, but they were very insistent, right-in, right-out only.
Great. If there... I don't know... I know David has been working on this, and we've contacted Assemblyman Fryman, I think, at one point to try and help and to meet with you and to do... To deal with the state, so, you know, as this progresses, if there's anything else that you need from our departments or from the town committee in general, please let us know. We'll do what we have to.
Thank you, Committee Member.
I think the project will be of benefit, as we did... Talked about when I was on the Board in COVID, that they would bring a nice valuable asset to our town center, so with that, I would make the motion to grant the extension.
I have a second.
We have to go through...
Do we?
Yep. So...
Little ahead.
And just to let you know, Committee Member Lapone, Mr. Seizner has actively been working on marketing the site, so he's pulling in tenants already. I mean, we're ready to go. We just have to get DOT on board, get our final sign-off on post-approval compliance from Mr. Coys, and he's ready to post bonds and start construction.
Okay.
All right. So first, any more comments from the dais? Good? Professionals, anything?
I have nothing to add. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to open the public, please.
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to question the attorneys on this application? And again, reminder, just to state your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. How many denials have you received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation? Two. Two? And what was the reason for those denials? They cited safety concerns. I'm sorry? They cited safety concerns regarding the lane merge that's going to be at the driveway access point for the property. Where is that driveway access point? On Route 206. It goes on... It goes off of 206 into that... Into that? The property has frontage on both Amwell Road, which is a county road, and 206, the state highway. So as proposed and as approved by the Planning Board, the project has a right-in, right-out access on Amwell Road and a right-in, right-out access on 206 with a left turn in from 206. And so where was the issue with the safety? Both? At the access point, there is a lane merge coming down 206. So the DOT was concerned about traffic slowing to make a turn in to the facility at the same time the cars were merging. And so has that changed? Well, as I indicated, it's my understanding that BMAP... That the division now at DOT is considering eliminating that lane drop by making the traffic light, the traffic coming into Route... Down Route 206 into Amwell is now two lanes, goes through the light and merges. My understanding is we're considering, or they're considering, making those two lanes a right turn only onto Amwell and one lane through, which would eliminate the lane drop or the merge. But it's all DOT jurisdiction, so whatever they say is what happens. Okay, so that... So what you just stated, that hasn't been done yet? Is that a definite... Will that definitely be done? No, I can't say that. We're still waiting. We submitted documentation to DOT that they requested, and we're waiting for a meeting. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Any other members of the public? Seeing none, motion to close the public.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Now, Committee Member.
What I said before. I would make a motion to approve three one-year extensions for the property, and then I guess we would... After each year, they would have to come back, or is it automatic rolling if they need to, Mr. Bernstein?
They're looking for automatic, Mr. Lapone, but I would recommend that the applicant come back every year, just to let us know, or at least...
We're already out a year, so we need a minimum of two years.
Two more years, so I would be back sometime in May of 2025, May of 2025, to give us an update.
So that would be two years at once, because we're...
They're going to... They're proposing to grant it, they just want an update in year two, year three, or four.
You want us to go... Okay, that's fine. We can submit something in writing to Mr. Coys and through Ms. Paget, and then if the Board would like to hear from us, we'd be happy to come back.
Okay, that's fine, as Mr. Bernstein said.
So could you clarify that, Mr. Bernstein?
The clarification is three one-year approvals through May 17, 2026, with the applicant giving the Board, through the Board Planning Director, an update on or before May 17, 2025, and again, on or before May 17, 2026, with the option of the Board to ask applicant to come before the Board to give a further public update.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I think you had a motion for Mr. Lapone.
We got it?
Got it.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Vander Vliet.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Yes.
Chair Sirocchi.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
And next time, I'll make sure I have a laptop that accepts an HDMI port. My apologies.
That works.
Are you recused on the next one? Are you recused on the next one?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I have all your stuff.
Thanks.
I got it. Thank you.
What? You could take a home roll, yes.
Next, Petrox Liquors, Inc., file number 23-PB-19-MSPV. Time of decision, May 31st of this year. And are there going to be a recusal?
Chairman, I am recusing myself of this application as I did prior.
Okay. Good evening.
Take some chocolate, go sit.
You, there's plenty to take.
But you have plenty of people on the board now, so.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Mike O'Grohan at Savo Shawk Law Firm on behalf of Petrox Liquors Incorporated. As you all know, Petrox has been an institution in Hillsborough since 1961. Tonight, we're here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a 480-square-foot addition onto the principal building to be used as onsite storage for liquor and other business products of the liquor store, not the restaurant, which has been identified on the tax map as lot 34.01 within block 163.22. As we know, it's in the town center zoning district. This is located at 419 Amwell Road. We were here previously on a waiver for conceptual plan, which is a requirement in the TC zone, given the scope of this application. We're seeking to construct a 20-foot by 24-foot addition. Existing uses will remain unchanged. This application is considered a major site plan since the existing and proposed impervious lot cover is 72.5% or more than 50%. So although we're compliant, since it's more than 50%, this is considered a major site plan, which also necessitates the conceptual plan review from this board as a prerequisite to the hearing. The 480-square-foot gross building area addition proposal will result in an increase in the required parking of 1.4 spaces. All other relief, including variances, design waivers relate to existing conditions, pre-existing non-conforming conditions, which are not exacerbated by the proposed small addition to the existing building. As you know, this is next to Art Scar's building, who I've known for years and spoken with. It's always been a drainage issue going from this side of the building down to Art's side. So we agreed to improve the proposed drainage, essentially down the left side of the building, which will provide for a direct connection to the existing roof downspouts to a catch basin, and then reduce all the runoff and the icing that was part of, that was discharging into the parking area. In fact, there was actually a slip and fall related to ice, and there's a lawsuit pending. So we really felt it was important to eliminate those conditions. The applicant is seeking variance relief for lot area in the TC zone. As you know, two acres are required. This lot is 1.6 acres. There's a maximum front yard setback of five feet, which is required, but 59.9 feet is existing and proposed. The building height is also non-compliant. It's a minimum two-story building in the town center zone, where one story is existing and proposed, and then the minimum usable floor area to usable floor, first floor area, 85% is required, and of course, 0% is existing and proposed. With me tonight, I have Michael Ford from Van Cleef Engineering Associates to review the site plan and to respond to any questions to the board.
You just want any testimony you can tonight, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state by your name?
Yes, Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey with Van Cleef Engineering since 1990, appeared before this board numerous times, and we're getting better.
There we go.
Okay.
Any objections? Seeing none?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Yeah, we feel this is a pretty straightforward application. As Mr. O'Grohan outlined, all but for the existing coverage on the lot, it would be classified as a minor site plan. The impervious coverage on the lot is not an issue, though, because the existing and proposed is less than the 85% max allowed in the TC zone. In fact, the application will result in no net increase in impervious coverage. The addition, and I have by way of exhibits, these are, this is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application. This was downloaded from Civic Clerk. It's last revised January 24th, 2024. It shows on the right side of the page, Amwell Road. North is at the top of the page, south, and what Mr. O'Grohan referred to as the Scar facility, Art Scar's building is to the south. There's a shared driveway between those two sites, and there's parking across the front of the site as well as at the back of the site.
We're going to mark this A1, Mr. Ford.
Yes, it's, it was submitted and it's, but we can call it A1, yep.
Thank you.
It's plan sheet number three.
Thank you.
The subject of the application includes the 24-by-20 addition at the rear of the liquor store portion of the facility, the existing restaurant along the north side of the property is approximately 3,000 square feet, and that's unchanged. The existing liquor store is approximately 10,000 square feet, and it'll have this 480-square-foot addition basically squaring off the rear right corner of the building. If you've, if anyone has been there before, this is, as you enter from the back of the building and head toward the restaurant entrance, on your right is a fenced-in area at the back of the liquor store. The fence would be removed. Any outdoor storage or components that are, you know, in that area would be removed. The addition is for storage and is immediately adjacent to other indoor storage portions of that liquor store building. There is a door access to the rear of the liquor store now. I'll highlight where it's at. It's on the south, or the, I'll say the rear left corner of the building. There's a sidewalk along the rear of the building, so the, in addition to the building expansion, that sidewalk would be carried across the rear of the building, providing for pedestrian walkway adjacent to the existing parking area. There's a door from the existing liquor store into that fenced-in courtyard now that would obviously be eliminated, and as part of the addition, there's only one, what I call a man door, it's the size of a standard door, being added at the rear of the building. So it's taking what right now is impervious coverage and pavement, what's often referred to as dirty surfaces, where runoff from those areas would potentially have untreated stormwater and turning it into roof area, which is not considered a dirty surface. So there's a slight, I'll say, water quality, stormwater runoff part of this, as a result of this application. The drainage improvement that Mr. O'Grohan referred to is along the south or left side of the existing building, there's a row of parking. The downspouts from basically the liquor store roof come down the side of the liquor store building and then discharge through the curb. There's little four-inch pipes that protrude through the curb and discharge runoff overland into this parking area, which then also continues to runoff, you know, into the common access driveway and down toward County Route 514, Amwell Road, where there's a storm drainage catch basin. What we're proposing is to eliminate that overland stormwater runoff, non-desirable condition, which is obviously already been described to cause concerns and issues, especially during freezing conditions, and putting it into a pipe, burying the pipe underground and making a direct connection into the storm drainage system in County Route 514. We've had a discussion with the neighbor about this connection, and one item they've asked us to explore is rather than connect to the catch basin rate alongside of the driveway, is connect to another catch basin along the County Route rate in front of our site in our front parking area, and we will explore that option, and as long as the county doesn't object, we would make that change. One other minor element as part of the application is, right now, at the rear right corner of the site, there's an existing trash enclosure. It's a standard concrete pad with a fence around it, and in front of that concrete pad is a no parking area, which is paved and is part of the overall impervious coverage and paved area of the site now. We've proposed to expand that trash area to make it 10 feet larger out in the front, so it would be a total of 20 by 20, and the gates would be moved out to the new entrance in the front and the fence expanded, so it would be a typical trash enclosure with a board-on-board fence to screen that area and provide for an area for additional trash. Right now, there are some trash-type receptacles in that outdoor storage area at the rear of the, of the liquor store that would be, this would provide for an opportunity to relocate those and get them away from the building where they could potentially be, you know, at hazard. We've described the relief that's part of this application. Mr. O'Grohan listed it. I won't go again through it in detail, but for, to enforce that all of those existing non-conforming conditions are related to the existing site. The site is a one-story building today, whereas the TC zone actually has a requirement of a minimum of a two-story building. So all of those, and that's just one of the non-conformities. All of those non-conformities exist. They're not being exacerbated by the application. It's a hardship to make any changes or to try to eliminate those relief conditions, and I believe that the board could approve all of those existing non-conforming conditions that have existed, perhaps not since 1961, but I understand in 1992, the restaurant and the liquor store were there, and the restaurant was actually the first all non-smoking restaurant in the state of New Jersey. That's what they state on their website. So the, these conditions have existed for many years without incident that I'm aware of, and the board should be able to grant those without any substantial detriment to the public good or an impact to the zone code and grant those reliefs as requested. As far as reviews, we've received an exemption letter from the Delaware and Ranford Canal Commission dated October 25th, 2023. We've also received an exemption letter from the Soil Erosion and Sematance Control District, that's the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, dated October 30th, 2023, and that acknowledges that this project is so small that it doesn't require their approval, and that is a project that results in less than 5,000 square feet of disturbance. Total, this project is approximately 3,000 square feet of total disturbance. So we are exempt from their purview. We made a visit to the Environmental Commission on February 26th. Mr. O'Grohan and I made a presentation. Perhaps it'll be a longer presentation than what we're making tonight. I don't know how I'll make it out on time, but we did discuss the project at length, but we received a report from the Environmental Commission dated March 13th, dated 2024, and they conclude by saying they have no objection to the application, and that's what they concluded when we visited them on February 26th. We also received a review from the Township Fire Marshal dated February 14th, 2024, with no comments. And with regards to the county, we're on a county route. We did receive a review report dated March 1st from the county. There are comments in the county report that we need to address, basically to confirm that we don't need to dedicate any right-of-way to Amwell Road. Our office has already reviewed that, and the existing right-of-way is in excess of the 33-foot half-width that the county said is needed, so there should be no right-of-way dedication along our frontage. They've asked us to demonstrate that we have adequate lines of sight at our driveways. As I've stated, those driveways have existed for many years, and we will comply with the county's request to verify that fact, and we will comply and ultimately gain full county approval of the application. With regards to two last remaining reports, we have a February 22nd, 2024 review from your planner, Mr. Coys. I've spoken to the relief that's required as part of this application, should also confirm for the board that the minor increase in the required parking due to the additional 480 square feet for storage, we've demonstrated on the site plan, this is Exhibit A1, that the existing parking is adequate for the existing condition and the proposed condition, and there's no aspect of this application that adversely impacts the existing parking area. No spaces will be eliminated, impact in any way as part of the application. I've talked to the relief. Perhaps then I can go on, and I don't recall that there were any items in Mr. Coys's review memorandum that suggested we make any changes or make any revisions to the plan, correct?
Correct.
And lastly, the board engineers review memorandum dated March 5th, 2024, and that's the first page. There are three other pages, Pages 2 through 4, just for the record, are dated February 27th, 2024, but that's the report I'm referring to. Typically, we go to just the items in the report that we would like to discuss or have objection to. They are specifically items, and first, perhaps, let me finish with some testimony. There was a request for testimony and clarification regarding the trash enclosure, some additional clarification. Right now, it's a curb along the front of the trash enclosure. That curb would be extended out around the front of the new expanded front portion of the enclosure, and a concrete pad similar to a typical trash enclosure and consistent with the existing condition would be constructed. And any additional details that the board's engineer would like with regards to construction details or clarification on the plan, we'd be glad to provide that. There is actually a plan sheet as part of the application, a construction detail sheet, and we do have on that sheet the typical detail for a trash enclosure, including the specifics of the thickness of the concrete pad and so on and so forth, but we'd be glad to clarify that further if there is a need. With regards to circulation and deliveries, there's a comment, five at the bottom of Page 2, regarding, or a request that we testify regarding truck deliveries. We, the existing condition doesn't have a designated loading space, if you will, but right now, it's our understanding from discussions with our applicant that there is, along the rear portion of the liquor store, there's a curb with no parking along it, where the deliveries would pull up and unload and park temporarily and unload, and materials would be moved, that is, you know, the products for sale at the liquor store would be moved into the rear left-hand corner of the existing liquor store. There's a larger door there. That would be the existing condition and the proposed condition, so we don't feel that there's a need for a designated loading area. This 480-square-foot addition doesn't prompt any substantial changes in the years of tested operation of the facility that has occurred without incident, to my knowledge, and we don't feel that this existing condition presents any substantial impediment to existing circulation of vehicles through the parking area or pedestrians. Right now, there's, as I said, parking along the front, which I think primarily is patrons of the liquor store, because that's where the main front entrance to the liquor store is, and then at the rear of the site, there's a parking area, and the main entrance to the, for pedestrians to the restaurant is in the, I'll say, the rear right corner of that restaurant or the north side of the restaurant and building, so that same pedestrian access would be maintained and not adversely impacted by the minor addition. On Page 2 of the review memorandum, it goes comments 6 through 14 under general comments. The three comments, and these are really the only three discussion items, because, and perhaps I can just jump ahead to miscellaneous first, under miscellaneous, again, there's comments starting with Item 1 through 4. We have no issues with those. I've already identified that we have basically gained all the outside agency approvals or no comment from the outside agencies but for the county, and we will complete that application process and gain their full approval. And we will complete that application process and gain their full approval. And then, again, back to the three comments for the board's consideration. Under general comments, I'll start with Item 10. And I'm going to talk about Item 10, 11, and 14. All of the other items under general comments, 1 through 14, I believe we've addressed under testimony already or we would agree to address to the board engineer satisfaction as any condition of approval this board may grant. So with the discussion, under Item 10, there's a, first, back at number six, and we've discussed it already, there's an acknowledgement that there's no increase in impervious coverage as a result of this application. So the existing storm drainage discharged from the site, for all intents and purposes, remains unchanged and not related to the 480-square-foot addition, but more connected to the ongoing conditions of the roof leaders discharging through the curb along our southerly boundary. We've proposed this direct tie-in to storm drainage for those roof leaders. So there's no trigger that warrants any stormwater mitigation from a quality, quantity, or recharge element. In fact, by just default, zero net impervious coverage and certainly well under an acre of impervious coverage, this is not triggering any technical requirements in your ordinance under a major stormwater management project. So under Item 10, there's an acknowledgement that there's no onsite stormwater management system onsite today. And a suggestion that, and I'll read it, "We suggest that the applicant implement an infiltration best management practice to help minimize stormwater runoff flow rates." The application is not changing the impervious coverage so we don't feel there's any appreciable or any change in those flow rates. And the direct tie-in will improve an existing condition with regards to overland flow and discharge across the paved area. Item 11. So we suggest to the board that Item 10 is not warranted technically by some regulation or by some condition that we're impacting as part of the application. Item 11, there's a suggestion that stormwater runoff calculations depicting the stormwater runoff flows for both the existing and proposed conditions shall be submitted. We can do those calculations, but the result would be the same for both the existing and proposed. I think the only change would be the title at the top would be existing condition and proposed condition. The three elements of stormwater runoff that are impacted for flows, the impervious coverage is not changing. So the actual coverage on the site is not changing. And the time of concentration is not being changed by this application. So we feel, again, because it's not classified as a major application and there is no change in the impervious coverage, that the need for additional calculations regarding existing and proposed conditions is unwarranted. And we would suggest to the board that Item 11 is not necessary. And then finally, with Item number 14, there's a suggestion, "A lighting plan should be prepared to ensure proper illumination for the entrance of the proposed storage area." So I described, and I'll go back to A1 again, one man door that's being proposed as part of the addition. There's no other entrances to that addition. And as part of building code requirements, and this would be reviewed and approved as part of a construction department building permit application, that a light is required, a building-mounted light would be required adjacent to that door. We have architectural plans that we've submitted for the seedlings meeting, but they're not construction plans yet. So those plans that would be submitted as part of a construction plan or permit application subsequent to a favorable action by the planning board would include those details, including that one light adjacent to the door. So we would be glad to add a note to the site plan that says at the time of the building permit application that the building code requirements with regards to lighting adjacent to door accesses to a building be complied with. But we would suggest to the board that the application doesn't warrant a specific, what you would normally see as a lighting plan as part of a site plan application. Because the lighting that's in that parking area at the rear of the site would not be changed or impacted by this application. I think I talked too much. Is there any?
Thank you. I'm just gonna turn it over to Mr. Coys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayhew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of comments. And I'll focus on the review letter, Page 3, the three items that Mr. Ford brought to the board's attention. Item 14, "Our office is comfortable waiving a lighting plan based on Mr. Ford's testimony." Item number 11. I understand Mr. Ford has testified in our office degrees there's no increase in the impervious cover. But there's a potential for a decrease in the time of concentration if you take roof runoff and directly connect it to pipes, which directly connects to the street inlet. And hence, our desire for those calculations. I will also point out that the DEP promotes disconnecting direct connections of roof drains. They prefer, and it's BNP and it's a green infrastructure design to disconnect roof drains. So we're going the opposite direction here. And hence, that's why we recommend, under Item number 10, to simply implement a very simple BNP. Since the pipe's being put into a stone trench, we recommend making a portion of that pipe perforated and giving it a chance to infiltrate some of that runoff, especially since none of the site has any controlled stormwater management. So in summary, if the applicant agreed to the turning a portion of the pipe into a perforated pipe and using the stone trench for infiltration, we would waive any calculations as we had recommended in Number 11. And also, to make it an easier situation, we're not asking for a full BNP design per the DEP.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, comments on the comments before we go to everyone else on the board?
I think we'd like to hear the board's discussion.
Okay.
What I would share with the board, though, is that recently, our office has been involved with the Sunnyland Retail Facility where Just Subs is, if you will. And they have an existing underground dry well that has caused, you know, issues with backup and stormwater runoff and actually adverse impact to some tenants where flow comes into the building. And after receiving this report yesterday, I reviewed the suggestions with regards to the infiltration. And the first thing I'm looking at when there's a suggestion for infiltration of this type of soils, certainly in the last 24, 48 hours, we haven't done any soil testing at this site. In fact, it would be hard to do that given the area in the front is basically covered by impervious. But what I would say to the board, back to the Sunnyland site, is one of the first things we did to try to assess the mode of failure for that dry well was to do onsite soil testing in accordance with the new BNP Management Best Management Practices, Chapter 12. And all the soil tests, the specific site, site-specific soil tests failed. In fact, if you've been to Just Subs, you may have seen disturbance in one of the landscaped islands in the front parking lot as well as the back. So we did as extensive a test as we could in those areas on that site. All of the permeability tests failed. There was a groundwater issue that was high. And the reason I say that and share that with this board is then I looked at, again, within the last 24, 48 hours, the mapped NRCS soil types for this site. And that site, and they're identical. We have Penn soils here, they have Penn soils at the Sunnyland site. There's Rayville soils here, we have Rayville soils at this site. So I'm certainly not saying that results would be identical, but it would be my expectation that there would not be a good opportunity for any infiltration at this site.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, we understand the site is currently paved so we're not asking for any pre-construction test pits to be performed. Number two, it doesn't really matter how, we don't need the tested one inch per hour that's typical of the DEP criteria when you're going to build a BNP. We're not asking that the site meets that one inch, whether it's a half inch, quarter inch, doesn't matter. And more importantly, unlike a dry well, putting in the pipe that's perforated, it doesn't matter even if it doesn't infiltrate. The water will just stay in the stone and pass through the pipe and go to the street as if it was a solid wool pipe. So nothing negative is happening by opening the pipe up and then giving it a chance to infiltrate. So you can't compare that system to a dry well, which is trying and needs to infiltrate to function properly. It's two different types of systems. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, comments, questions?
I've got some. Hi, Mr. Ford. I'm looking at the utility connections. I see that there's an electrical connection as well.
Right. An improvement to the existing service.
All right, well, let's start with that one. The area of disturbance goes right next to an existing tree. Is that tree going to stay in place?
Yeah, we don't have any plans to impact any of the landscaping onsite, so.
Right, so you're gonna go around it?
We can go around it, yeah.
Okay. And then, on the other side of the tree is the storm sewer connection. And that appears to cross over the property line.
Correct.
You mentioned that you had talked to the neighbor about this. But is there any, do we need anything by way of easement or agreement or anything to? I mean, you're trenching through the parking lot that's on his side of the property. So maybe it is a.
Yeah, so there is an existing easement. It's not a drainage easement. Mr. Scar was gracious enough to say that if we couldn't tie into that catch basin, he would grant a drainage easement in addition to the shared access easement that the parties had previously negotiated and are on record. But Mr. Scar's preference is that we locate that drain to the other catch basin. And Mr. Ford feels that the county would be agreeable to that.
Right, that was the other option.
So that we don't have the impact.
But if you didn't, I just, you know, if for some reason it comes back that there's something existing with the neighbor that it's okay. And so that was my, I know you had addressed it, I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, yes, I spoke with Mr. Scar. And I said we would make our best efforts to avoid encroachment onto his lot.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mike.
Any other comments? So I just want to just get some clarifications with regards to our engineers memo and, you know, what you do agree to here. Because I'm not sure if I had heard it or not. I think it was Item 9 with regards to a roof plan to display the runoff.
Yes.
You're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, considering we had a little bit of a debate on 10, it doesn't sound like that was preferable. So you're in agreement with Item 11 to provide runoff calculations?
No, that was one of the three that we are objecting to, the 10, 11, and 14.
But you did testify with 14 that you would provide something in advance.
Yeah, we would add a note to the plan that we only have one door that we're putting back there. We'll put the note on the plan that the light will be provided and it'll be subject to the construction department review. We're just, the note seems to suggest that a lighting plan be added to this plan set with.
Okay.
And we're.
But we'll get some indication of illumination in some document?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So with that, do I have a motion open to public?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public that would like to question Mr. Ford on his testimony, please come up. And again, as a reminder, state your name and address for the record, please.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. You're stating that there won't be any increase in impervious coverage?
Yes.
So where the addition is going to be situated, is that already impervious?
Yes.
Okay. In regard to the drainage issue, where is the overland water runoff currently going into what?
This, the, out to Amwell Road.
Out to Amwell Road?
Yes.
It just goes overland out to Amwell Road?
There's drainage features, there's a catch basin and other catch basins within our parking area. Overall, everything, all of this site drains out to Amwell Road. There's drainage improvements, drainage catch basins that capture it and connect it to pipes in Amwell Road. So when you ask where the drainage goes, to Amwell Road.
To Amwell Road, the pipes that are under the ground, under?
Correct.
Okay. And so what is now going to be proposed with this addition?
Not triggered by the addition, but part of the project is a proposal to connect the roof leaders that right now discharge through the curb into the parking area with a new pipe and a direct connection to the drainage that eventually goes out to Amwell Road.
So it'll still be going into the same?
It goes into the same system. It's just piped underground and not permitted to flow from the roof through a downspout out onto the parking area where the cars are and people are walking. It would be taken from the roof downspouts into a pipe and then continued in an underground pipe under the pavement area out to Amwell Road.
So will new pipes have to be constructed?
Yes.
Okay, and that's going to be also under what road?
It'd be under the parking area on the applicant's property. And part of the discussion you just heard is there's a shared driveway with a property line through it. So right now, there's also drainage improvements that extend onto our neighbor's property. If we don't secure approval from them to, we're proposing to move it all onto our property, subject to county approval. If the county doesn't approve that, we would then be required to solidify our existing agreement with the neighbor that already states what can and cannot happen within a shared access easement between the two properties to include drainage.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to? We just had a member of the public walk in, so. But just gonna extend the courtesy. Okay, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Bernstein? Well, I guess it's.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, the issue still is Item number 10. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the issue still is item number 10. Thank you, Mr. Mayhew. On the Penoni report of February 27, 2024, Mr. Mayhew is recommending to the board what, for the purposes of finality, Mark?
A portion of the proposed roof drain pipe be perforated to allow some infiltration to potentially occur in the stone trench.
But that end, but you said you would waive the calculation?
Yes.
From item 11?
Correct.
And agree to Mr. Ford's comments as to item number 14.
Correct. Our office is willing to waive that comment, given the testimony that a light would be added to the doorway.
Any last words, Mr. Ford?
Just, we would be concerned, we're, it's all pavement now, the pipe is going under the pavement. Right now, we have a stormwater runoff issue with runoff over the pavement. Now we're piping it under the pavement, and by adding perforations, one concern might be that that offers an opportunity for water within that trench to have an adverse impact to our pavement now below the surface instead of above the surface. But it's a board decision.
And just.
And we don't feel there's any element of the project, including regulations, that trigger the requirement.
Okay. And I know, and recognize, number 10 was a suggestion, but the objection for number 11 for not, you know, wanting to perform calculations, what's the concern there?
Well, that's the same as, it's not a major project, it's a minor stormwater project. And quite frankly, what would you do with the calculations? If there's 10 CFS going out there today, and there's a minor change of, because of some time of concentration of 10.1 CFS, there wouldn't be a trigger in the, under the minor stormwater calculate, minor stormwater project regulations that would trigger any requirement for action. And I, honestly, if the only reason is that it would potentially change the time of concentration by adding a pipe that eliminates a substantial potential public health safety issue with slips and falls on pavement over the, or runoff over the pavement, I feel that would outweigh any detriment to the potential minor change from an analytical calculation standpoint in runoff.
I'll just add, you know, there's a $600,000 demand for a broken hip on that slip and fall. So Mr. Scar and Mr. Petrok had a discussion, and this was the improvement that we think will eliminate that safety risk because there's been ice buildup over the years on that facade.
Mr. Ford, what is the depth below grade of that trench? I'm just kind of curious. Because is your concern frost heave if the water sits there in that trench? And if you're high enough, are you concerned about frost heave on that asphalt?
About two and a half feet, and we're proposing a 12-inch pipe, so it's minimal cover over the pipe. We're not going deep. The drainage in Amwell Road is not that deep.
I didn't think you could go that deep on that.
Yeah. And the upper portion of the pipe is a 10-inch pipe, and that's already been sized in accordance with the plumbing code, which has jurisdiction over roof leaders and discharge header systems that connect roof leaders to drainage collection systems. We've already looked at the area of roof, basically the 10,000 square feet of the liquor store that would go to that 10-inch pipe. That's why it's sized that way. And that's why we have no objection to, given Mr. Mayhew's office, the plumbing code section that otherwise is going to be reviewed by your construction department as part of their jurisdiction over that portion of the pipe that connects to the roof leaders.
If I could help clarify, Mr. Ford, I think by the time you get to the first catch basin, the pipe's almost four feet deep.
I'm looking at our profile. We have a profile on sheet four, and the grade elevation is 97.6, and the invert in is 94.9. So basically, the difference between those two would be our deepest point there. And I was just looking at also, on that profile, Mr. Mayhew, there's the, I don't have a scale on me, but the vertical lines are at elevation 195, and I was looking at the difference between where the downstream invert is at catch basin, the existing catch basin, and the existing grade, which is about halfway between 95 and 100. So that's why I stated the two and a half feet.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at catch basin one, 99.2, and the invert's 95.61, so that's like 3.6 feet. And just for the record, again, I can understand the concern about freezing water to pavement, but this has a pipe with a slope to the inlet, so water's not going to sit in the trench. If the water's not infiltrating, it'll just flow through the pipe as if it was a solid wall pipe and go to the street.
Mr. Chairman, before the board takes an action, we need to make sure the public has its last words on the overall application.
Yep. Thank you. So we'll do that. Need just a simple motion. Now, we close. Okay, motion open to public for final comments.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Debb seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is public final comments on this application. Feel free to come up. Okay. Motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board's call on the one issue that apparently is still at issue.
All eyes on me, okay. Now I'm throwing at Mr. Mayhew now. Say, we waive number 10 because of suggestion, but with the calculations, runoff calculations, is there a threshold or that would be of concern if it exceeded a certain amount? And what would that, you know, any options to mitigate that concern? I'm just trying to understand what we have in front of us, so.
I don't know the existing condition in the county storm system. It's probably stressed. I wouldn't want to be increasing more than 10%. Maybe peak flow, off the top of my head.
Okay. And just say, peak flow did exceed 10%, what would be the options to the applicant at that point to mitigate that? As I came back to the perforated pipe?
That would be one way. Our office would be comfortable with that.
I'm expecting someone to, no, it's okay. I mean, I'll throw, you know, a motion to approve with, you know, what has been agreed to with the extra caveat that maybe we'll let the two engineers to further discuss following a calculation and see where that ends up, and then come to a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment. I mean, this is a really kind of a minor project. I mean, there's not a whole lot to it, and while I appreciate Mr. Mayhew's concern with perforated pipe, I would be more inclined to approve this as submitted by the applicant. I mean, we're talking a small addition in dumpster enclosure. I mean, we're kind of getting a little into the weeds here, aren't we?
Well, I think what it is, is the runoff is now, is not going into the parking lot property.
You're going to reduce the runoff either way.
Right, but it's going into a system that I think, that's why Mr. Mayhew was looking for a calculation, because it's going to go into the county system, and I think he just wants to get a feel for how much is that going to increase, the peak flow.
Well, I'd be inclined to make a motion to approve it as is.
I would probably support the chairman's concern, because from my perspective, there should be some simple calculations, just like a little equation or something, right? Where numbers could be put in. And if I'm wrong, this is the assumption that I'm going with, right? Please correct me. If it's a simple calculation that shows what the impact is, right? Pre versus post. If it is not material, then it doesn't really matter, but we have some documentation out there in front of the county. That's just my opinion. Now, is that going to create a whole lot of pain? Is it going to need hours of work? That's something if the, you know, kind of engineers could advise us. You know, if it is a small calculation, that can be taken care of at the next step. I would be inclined to putting that tag before approving.
It's the side of the board's turn to.
Got a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the project as proposed with the items previously agreed to by the parties and agreement to all items in the reports, the professionals, except for number 10 in Mr. Mayhew's report, and the waivers previously granted as to the others. That was Mr. Peason's motion translated.
All right. But also minus number 11, too, minus calculations.
Well, I said minus, but.
Oh, okay. Well, 10 was the perforated, 11 was the.
Perforated, and 11 and 14, I believe, have been previously addressed.
11 would have only been addressed if 10 was accepted by the applicant, so it would be a motion minus 10 and 11. If that's what I heard.
10, 11, in the February 27, 2024 Penoni report, under general comment. Need a second. Don't everybody rush.
So Mr. Mayhew, while others are trying to decide, the peak flow into the county system, if it, is there a flooding concern at that point, or failure of the county system, or if it's already stressed?
You know, I don't know where that pipe goes. I don't know if there is any downstream flooding issues. My guess is there probably is, since there are so many issues locally.
If it's a county, if it's a county system, is county approval required? So the county can make that determination?
If the county believes there is a need to make a determination, I'm assuming that the applicant will be submitting paperwork to the county where applicable. Mr. Ford can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. The March 1, 2024 report from the county has no objections to the storm drainage, and it states under stormwater management requirements. Didn't request any improvements. It does say, as the site does not propose an increase in impervious coverage and the existing drainage patterns are maintained, it is requested that the township handle the review of stormwater management from the site.
There we go.
So they have no objection, and it all goes to them.
Right, they, it sounded like they dropped 10 and punted us, so, the way I interpret that from them.
Well, if anybody's impacted, it would be the county.
We still lack a second, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, someone can make another motion. I mean, we have one out there now, no one's seconding it. Is there anyone else that have ideas?
I have to say, I would concur with Mr. Peason.
So do you want a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion second. Any final comments from the dais? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Banderly?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigurhelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peazon?
Yes.
Kira Sarachi?
Yes. Let me get back to my agenda. Okay. So we do have on the schedule a business meeting, so we're going to cancel. Can I have a motion to cancel the March 28 business meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Banderly?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Scobbo?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Come in here in the potty.
Yes, from the back, yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigurhelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peazon?
Yes.
Kira Sarachi?
Yes. And with that, our next meeting is April 4 at 7:00 PM, on or about. I assume we do have a full agenda. Excellent. So with that, there we go. So with that, I entertain a motion of adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Good night, see everyone on April 4.